Genesee County 91.
Hi, this is OnStar Emergency. Is the ramp going from I-69 going into I-75 North in Flint Township, Michigan? Is that your jurisdiction?
It is.
Okay. Uh, one of us was...
Eastbound? Is it eastbound or westbound 69?
Westbound 69 going into the ramp to I-75 North. Uh, car accident, uh, with injuries, um, Airbag Department.
So it's westbound 69 to northbound 75 ramp?
Yes.
How many vehicles?
Um, so far two vehicles.
What type of injuries?
Not sure. He wouldn't answer, uh, questions correctly. He just said that he was injured.
Okay. You said the male couldn't answer questions?
No, he was just... he was not answering my questions.
Do you know what type of vehicle it is?
Yeah, he's in a 2016 Chevrolet Impala, silver. I don't know what's the other vehicle that hit him. But he's in a silver Impala.
Okay, and just to verify, westbound 69 to northbound 75 ramp?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And can I get your name and badge, sir?
I'm 44.
Okay, my reference number is 9293. Do you need my call back or do you have him?
Is it 866-866-5006?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, all right, we're getting help on the way.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thanks, bye-bye.
2832, 2827 for a PI accident. Westbound 69, northbound 75. OnStar's reporting a two-vehicle accident with injuries, still trying to get further.
Looks like it's gonna be westbound 69, northbound I-75 ramp to Miller Road. Northbound I-75 ramp to Miller Road. OnStar's reporting a two-vehicle collision there. So, 3575.
3575.
PNSFPI.
Copy, accident.
3575, we're at the interchange now, so this is westbound to northbound, right?
That's the way we were given it, westbound to northbound.
3575, you show us out.
Okay.
3575.
Go ahead, 3575.
Uh, just a one-car PDA. We can take it up the S-28 cars if you'd like.
3575, we have two Flint Township cars en route. They should be pulling on shortly. And 2832 and 2827. 3575 advised that it was a one-car PDA.
3575.
Go ahead, 3575.
And supposedly the driver had, uh, somebody pull a gun on him, break for a description on the vehicle. 3575, you ready for the description?
Affirmative.
Uh, black, newer 2014, 2015 Malibu. Uh, black male wearing a baseball hat, unknown color. Last seen either, uh, northbound 75 or exited Miller.
Copy. Black nor Malibu, possibly 2014, 2015. Agreed by a black male wearing an unknown baseball hat, exited at Miller.
3575.
Go ahead.
Louis, please.
Okay.
3575.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, let's take one of the posts.
109.
In order to get from the ramp from westbound to northbound, we have to go... we have to be on westbound, taking on northbound ramp. Right, why would this bend over here?
I don't think I've seen a patient like this either, right?
Because people won't pay attention to me. That's why I tell you, you gotta keep your head looking at traffic when we're on everybody. Four, again, watch. Thank you.
Hey, guys, in a club and got mom. Let's put a loud music in the area, 0-0-0-6.
Uh-huh. Left ramp to westbound, we can ramp around that way. Or I like this one, because it's...
Yeah, I was trying to say that.
We'll take it back after the van. It really sucks when they put out the wrong ramp, because then we did all that and we gotta redo it all over again to get to the right ramp. You know what I mean? And, uh... We're on westbound 69, now we're getting to northbound 75, right? And we're going to a crash, we don't know where that crash might be, so we're getting well, we're thinking it wasn't already on, so we need to blow up a little bit, because we don't want to hurt you.
Correct.
Into that same crash. What was that address for that DOL flow, is it traffic we're running? 3575, you show us out.
Okay.
Watch that track. How you doing, partner? How are you? You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine today. Somebody tried to pull inside me and threw the gun out, and I tried to swerve around, and they're like... They just gonna try to shoot you, man, and I had to get away from them.
Okay, where... did you hit somebody else?
No, I did not. No, I did not. But they had the gun on me, though.
What did you... what did you hit?
Just right here.
Okay, are you okay?
Mm-hmm.
You need any insurance, anything like that?
Nope.
Okay.
I just tried to get away from them, though. They had the gun on me, though.
Okay. We got an ambulance coming, because we had...
No, I'm all right. No, I'm okay.
So...
They don't need to come.
Okay, I'll get them canceled. Do you have your driver's license, registration, insurance, sign, partner?
I don't have my registration. It's a rental car.
Okay. 3575.
Go ahead, 3575.
Uh, just a one-car PDA. We can take it up the S-28 if you'd like. So, who pulled...
They were doing this to me, but they were trying to side me with a gun, pointing like this, and I'm like...
Okay, so was there a motorcycle involved with this?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so who pulled on side you with a gun?
I don't know.
You know why?
Nope, I don't.
What kind of car was it?
It was like a Malibu. It was somewhat similar to mine, but it was a smaller.
What color was it? What color was it?
Burgundy.
Burgundy?
That's what I could think.
Do you think it was newer?
I don't know.
What did the person look like?
It was a black guy.
Black guy, what was he wearing?
Baseball helmet, man.
What color was it?
I don't know.
You don't know? Which way did he go after your crash?
This way. He kept going that way.
Did he get off on Miller or did he keep going northbound?
He kept on Miller. He had to get off on Miller. Since this way, he had to get off on Miller.
Well, you can actually get back on northbound 75, still left.
Either way, either he went north 75 or he got on Miller Road.
Okay. 3575. And supposedly the driver had, uh, somebody pull a gun on him, break for a description on the vehicle. So must he have... that's probably had somebody pull a gun on him, and that's why he crashed. Yeah, right. Could just help him, and somebody... Okay, were you in Blackstone today?
I was down nearby there.
Where were you at?
Sitting down nearby there, talking to a couple of friends, and they've been following me. They've been following me probably about three this morning.
So, where were you at downtown by Blackstone? Were you sitting in Blackstone? Were you on the sidewalk?
I was in Blackstone, and I came out of Blackstone, and I walked over to town.
Yeah, you're done. Good. So, you're sitting out at Blackstone, when did you see these people following you?
About thirty minutes ago.
Thirty minutes ago you noticed them? So how did you first notice these people following you?
From the beginning.
How? How did you know they were following you?
Because I was sitting outside.
Okay, so what did you see that made you think somebody was following you?
I seen a burgundy car, seeing them like... I didn't know who they were, but they were following me from time to time, and so I got on the expressway, because I could get away from it.
Okay.
And when I got, like, two hours...
Well, we're kinda missing some details here, right? Because you're at Blackstone, and all of a sudden you think somebody's following you. How do we get to that point? How do we get to the point where you think somebody's following you? You said you're sitting at Blackstone, and when did you see somebody?
When I got on I-475. That's the expressway I was at.
Okay, so did you think somebody was following you when you were at Blackstone? Okay, what did you see while you were at Blackstone that led you to believe that somebody was following you?
It was a burgundy car. They just kept standing behind me, and I kept trying to...
Okay, well, if you're at Blackstone, was there a car driving through Blackstone?
No, they got behind me when I... when I pulled off.
Well, at Blackstone, you didn't think anybody was following you, right?
Not when I was parked.
Okay, but you were...
You were out of your car in Blackstone, right? So no... you didn't think anybody was following you there, right?
Yeah?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so you get in your car, you leave Blackstone, and that's when you think somebody's following you, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you get in your car, you leave Blackstone, you're coming down Saginaw Street, right? Okay, so at what point do you think somebody's following you?
When I was on the expressway.
Which one?
The one that's right to my back there.
Well, there's two of them right by downtown. Was it 69 or 475?
475.
So you got on 475, okay, and what do you see that makes you think somebody's following you?
Because the car was... happened to stay behind me, and I wanted... when I switched over the lane, they switched over the lane with me.
Okay, so where'd you go after you got on, uh, on 475?
I hit somebody going through it in the middle of the road.
Okay, so you actually got on I-69, because 475 doesn't cross anymore, right?
Well, that's 69.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to be clear. So you get on 69, you change lane, they change lanes, right? Okay, so what happened as you're driving down 69?
Down the side, I like they were trying to stop, and I just...
How would someone be trying to stop you?
They doing this.
You saw them?
Yeah.
Okay, so what were they? Were they pointing at you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They kept doing this.
Okay, so when they pulled up next to you, were they on your driver's side or passenger's side?
On passenger side.
On your passenger side. Okay, so there's two people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There was three people.
Three people.
It could've been four, but I know it was at least three people.
Okay, so you saw that there was somebody sitting in the back then?
Yeah.
Okay, so they pull up next to you on your passenger side, and they're telling you, oh, they went it out. What happened then?
Then I kept telling them, I said...
No thanks.
So I tried to take off real fast away from them, and then I seen a gun like this, and I'm like... So I took off, but they tried to zoom in front of me, and I don't know who was behind me, so I'm like... And that's that.
So how did we end up here?
They came around this curve. They kept going that way.
Okay, so at some point they're next to you, this is only one lane, so there's not enough room for two cars, so did they get behind you, or were they in front of you?
They got in front of me. After I went stop, they got in front of me, but I don't know who was behind me, but the way they tried to cross in front of me, they tried to block me off.
Okay, so they're driving in front of you. What happened then?
Then I got over on the side.
Did you what?
Then they stopped on their brakes, and then I zoomed over, and when I zoomed over, I think I hit them in the back. When I hit them in the back, they kept going. When I hit them in the back, I zoomed over.
Okay, you swerved to the what? Lot?
To the left.
And you hit them in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Hit the back of their car?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then what did you hit?
I actually hit the back of their car, because when I hit them in the back of the car...
Well, this is them from the back of their car, is this from a guardrail? Is that what you're getting at?
I hit them in the back of the car, and I zoomed over, but they did have a gun.
Okay, well, what did we hit on the side of the car?
I don't know what I hit on the side of the car, but I hit them in the back, and I hit this guy.
Did you hit the guardrail? Okay, that's what I'm getting at. Okay.
Kept trying to tell me to stop, and then they pulled the gun out, and I'm like...
Mm-hmm. Well, you didn't hit a car at the front of that. You didn't hit a car at the front of your car.
I was trying to get out their way.
Right, so what did you hit?
I don't know, but I was trying to get out their way.
You don't know what you hit? Was it...
I know I hit their car. I did hit their car.
Okay.
I did hit their car. So if you catch them going up that way, I hit their car from the back.
But there's nothing on the front of your car that would indicate you hit another car? That's all I'm telling you.
Well, I know I hit their car. I did. From the beginning, I did.
Okay, all right.
And when I hit their car, pissed off and hit this.
Okay. How much have you had to drink tonight, partner?
Not much.
Not much? Okay.
Yeah, not much.
All right, how much is not much?
Not much. I had one... one drink, that's it.
Okay.
I did. Be honest with you.
Yeah, I appreciate you being on.
But I'm gonna be honest with you. I am a city official. I've been fighting against this administration.
I'm a state official. Hey! All right? So, uh, what is not much to you? How much did you drink?
I just had one drink, that's it.
One drink? What was your drink that you had?
Goose and cranberry juice.
Goose and cranberry? How big was it?
I don't know.
Like Grey Goose, doughy?
Yeah.
Bock and cranberry?
Yeah.
Okay, so how big was it?
I don't know.
You don't know? I don't know either. Did you drink it?
I'll be playing some addicts, man.
No, I'm... that's what I'm asking you.
I'm trying to be honest with you, man.
How big was it? Because I don't know. I wasn't there.
I drink like this, man.
Okay, that's a tiny drink.
I did.
Okay.
I'm being honest with you, man.
Okay.
Now, I'm being honest with you. I've been fighting against this administration.
Okay.
A lot of bullshit they've been doing.
Well, sir, I know I don't have anything to do with that.
I know, but I don't know who got to hit on me or not. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, but I've been telling you.
Right.
Somebody pulled a gun on me.
I hear ya.
Coming... coming around this way.
I hear ya.
And I tried to get them away from me. They blocked me in.
Mm-hmm, yep, I hear ya. I hear what you're saying. All right, cool. Why don't you, uh... why don't you come back here for me real quick, partner? You don't have anything illegal or dangerous on your track?
No.
Okay, do you mind if I check real quick?
Okay.
I'm just gonna check for guns or weapons or anything like that, okay? Just wanna make sure you don't have anything that's gonna hurt me or my partner here, okay? Okay, we're good. All right, come on back here. What is your, uh... what's your highest level of education, sir? You know how to read, write, and count, right? Okay, did you finish school? Did you finish... okay.
That's a great education, but...
Okay.
But I go to college now.
Oh, cool, so you know... you know how to read, write, and count, and all that stuff, okay, right? Um, do you have any problem with your legs or anything like that? Knees, ankles, anything that affects your balance at all?
No.
No? Okay, all right, cool. Do you have any problem with your eyes? Any wear contacts?
Nope.
No? Okay. All right. Well, the first thing I'm gonna have you do... what I'm gonna do is I just kinda wanna feel... Yeah, this is a sobriety test. That's what I'm gonna do, okay? So what I wanna do real quick, just some real quick and easy ones, okay? Because I just kinda wanna see where you're at. That's all I wanna see, all right? Uh, the first thing I'm gonna have you do, and I want you to kinda do this throughout the rest of the test, is if you're good, just stand with your feet together and your arms down to your side. Yep, just like that, perfect. Um, and the first thing I want you to do is with your right hand, okay, and don't start until I finish showing you how to do it, okay? So just keep your arms down to your side, and I'll tell you when to start, okay? So the first thing I want you to do is count just like this. One, two, three, four, four, three, two, one. When you do that, I want you to tuck each one of your fingers to your thumb while counting out loud, okay? Can you understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so go ahead.
One, two, three, four. I'm losing it, yeah.
What? I'm just asking you... these are easy, that's all. Okay, um, you know your alphabet, you know how to read, you know how to write? Right, okay, so what I want you to do is I want you to recite the alphabet for me, okay? I want you to start with the letter B and end with the letter X, okay?
B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z. B, C, D...
Yeah, I'm good. Okay. All right, can you keep your arms down to your sides for me? Perfect. Um, I don't want you to trip on that. Why don't we... why don't you turn around? I want to... I don't want my light to mess up your eyes here, okay? There you go. Just put your feet back together for me, just like... just like you were. Yep, right, right tight together, there we go, and just keep your arms down to your side, okay? What I want you to do...
Take this off, so I don't look like this.
Oh, okay.
Get over there.
Here, let's put it right here. I don't want you to lose it. All right, what I want you to do is just... can you see my finger okay right here? Okay, what I want you to do is follow my finger with just your eyes, okay? And could you do me a favor? Could you actually spit your gum out for me? Thank you. Um, follow my finger with just your eyes, okay? I don't want you to turn your head or anything like that. Follow with just your eyes, okay? Okay, I need you to make sure that you... don't move your head, okay? Just... just your eyes, okay? Okay, all right, um, have you ever taken a PBT before? It's called the preliminary breath test. It's just a side of the road. It's basically like a breathalyzer, except it's small and it's on the side of the road, that's all it is. Just turn around a little bit, that means it's a thing. Um, Michigan law requires you to commit to a PBT upon my request. Your failure to do so can result in being charged with civil infraction, fined up to $100. That's all, okay? So why don't you hang tight for just a minute? I'll be right back with you. If you wanna grab your hat, you can. If you want, just leave it there, that's fine.
I don't wanna take that.
Okay, that's all I'm asking you.
No, I'm not gonna take it.
Okay.
Because I did have a drink, and I'll be honest with you, I...
Oh, I understand, and no one's debating the fact that you did take a drink, okay?
But I'm being honest with you, man. Somebody did have a gun on me.
Did I tell you I don't believe you?
Okay.
I'm not saying I don't believe you, okay? Well, I need to make sure that you were able to drive a car, that's all. That's it.
But that right there would make me feel like I'm being victimized.
We're not being victimized, okay, because we're here to make sure that you're able to drive a car, and this is gonna tell me for sure, okay?
I don't want...
Because I don't know.
I don't wanna take that.
Do you understand that you can be, uh, indicted for civil infraction for not taking this test, and that when you sign to take your driver's license, you imply that we... or you're giving consent for us to take this test?
I understand.
Do you understand that?
I do.
Okay, all right.
But I don't wanna be feeling like I'm the victim, though.
Oh, I understand that.
Somebody had a gun on me.
Oh, and I'm not saying that.
But that's the issue that was...
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have you turn around. I'm gonna place you under arrest for drunk driving, okay? So turn around.
So if I take the test, I'm gonna be under... under arrest?
Nope, turn around.
Okay, I take the test. If I'm gonna be on the test, I won't be under arrest.
Here's what's gonna happen, okay? You can either give consent to take the test, or you don't give consent to take the test.
If I give consent to take the test, then what happens?
Okay.
Take the consequences.
If what? If you don't take the test?
Mm-hmm.
You can be...
So if I do take the test, then what?
Let me finish. I'm gonna answer each question as you give it, okay? So the first one is if you don't take the test, you can get a ticket for us. If you don't take that test, you get a ticket for us.
But if I don't take this, I get a ticket?
You can get a ticket for us.
You're someone I'll be under arrest.
Correct.
If I don't take the test.
It's very simple, okay? You wanna take that... you wanna take that test, or you don't?
But I'm saying if I do take the test, will I be under arrest?
Well, you could get a ticket for not taking it, okay? And if you don't take it, I'm probably gonna take you to jail for drunk driving, because I believe that you're over legal limit, okay? All right, go ahead and put your hands behind your back. There you go. Put your palms together for me. Put your palms together for me. No, just your palms. You're hanging on both. There you go.
What about people that have a gun against you, though?
I'm gonna tell you all about what we did about that. Okay? What about them? Go ahead, and let's walk up to the front of my car here, okay? So, the people that have a gun on you, okay, you gave me the description of the car, right? Sure?
Mm.
Okay, you gave, you gave me the description of the car. So what I did, as soon as you gave me the description of the car, did you see the other officers that were out here? There was like three or four of them. Um, I told all those guys, I put it out on the radio, the description of the car that you gave, and they went around to go check for that vehicle. Did you hear if they came up with that? I didn't hear any, anything either. So they're checking for that vehicle, okay? Without knowing exactly which way it went, makes it a little bit more difficult, but...
But why do I have to be the victim, though? I don't want to...
You're not a victim, what are you, a vic...
Because you arrested me for D U I.
Right, because you have had too much...
I just did. I just had a drink, I just had a drink.
Right, and we...
You don't mean that it kicked in on me that fast?
Well, it did, sure, because the sobriety test that I gave you, if you failed it...
How, because I didn't take the test?
No. Remember all the questions that I asked you, and all that stuff? Those are all parts of...
B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P...
You failed, though, so that's why.
How, I just told you. B, C, E, V, G... B, C, E, V, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P...
Are you hearing yourself, partner? You're, you're, you're melting it up more, you know what I mean? Do you have anything illegal in your file, I need to know about certain things? Okay. Can you spread your legs out for me? All right. Okay. Uh, what I'm gonna do is have you walk over here on the passenger side, we're gonna have you have a seat in the car for me. Yeah. Actually, I'll stand right behind the car, just 'cause I don't wanna get hit by this guy here. People drive like crazy out here, as you know. All right, come on, partner. Oh, hold on, let me move these things here for you. All right. Have a seat there for me. All right, I'm gonna put the seatbelt on for you. Are you sending that to a rental car?
Yeah, dude.
Okay. All right, you all right?
Yep.
Okay.
6360, 711.
6360, 711.
241, 2000, Alpha Way.
241, back.
28609, 2609, Alpha Way, trouble to plan, 25-year-old, Darius Hall, black man wearing a green shirt, black pants. His father said he was eye control and hung up.
Copy.
That girl's a 40. 211, that's status. 211, first status. 211, fourth status on Devon Lane. Car's been in the hole at the airport, 211, 2000 Devon Lane. 211.
Can I ask my father, my wife?
Your wife?
211, 2210, Devon Lane.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as you get down to the county, you can.
Oh, man, this is really not, I'm trying to get out. I'll be honest with you, man.
Quite hard.
And I hope that you at least understand that. They followed me from the...
You at the club?
Yep.
Know where you was drinking at?
211.
211.
211, status, are you off that?
That was drinking when you were talking about.
Well, so. 224, 241, you can dance, we're there off that. Send you back to normal traffic, 0044.
241, first status.
What goes to you?
Boy, well, no, you weren't a good at all.
Oh, you can go out to the county, you'll get by.
211, her.
Process. The DUI.
I'm doing them all, they're not. Coming.
And then we'll be... What? DUI, because I'm not drunk at all.
That's it.
It is a DUI, and I'm not drunk. And it would go through that. And it'd be on too. Uh, you get time to sober up, but I'm not drunk at all.
During periods, how about, how did that sound?
I mean, if we can say that, but I'm not drunk. I mean, but that's an illegal condition, man, we can't leave, like, there's nothing else to come out of it, man, nothing like making it there. Mm, mm, there's nothing else to come out of it.
Right, not right now.
Okay.
You know, you know, I appreciate you, uh, grabbing me out of bed.
I'm, man, I ain't got no reason to tell no advocate story and that, but, uh, they followed me all the way to jail. And I tried everything I could to get away from it.
231. I'm trying to find, uh, the internet, trying to, uh, play 891, uh, or...
2327, commercial line, 40 feet, getting, uh, outback state coast, trip on the front door, and insert motion in the kitchen.
211.
She says she's 2210, Devon Lane, it's building 1, 36, 136, she says she's near the front, she's seen you right past, she's near the brick.
211, copy.
I don't know.
They didn't go in the paper, they didn't go in the...
I don't know, or... I don't know, honestly.
You'll be honest with me, brother.
Sir, we wish I could tell you, do you think it'll go in the paper?
I don't know.
Me either, because I, I really don't know.
2812, 338, 338.
Oklahoma Desert.
338, 338.
Oklahoma Desert.
I, I'm being, I'm being cooperative with you.
Yeah, you know, we had no control of that, though. Just try calling that, call the caller, if she sees us tracked by, go ahead and come out, and call the sponsor.
I thought I told her to come on, but...
Not to beat you, but, uh, treating that guy, I'm, I'm staying cool.
Bill, Bill, maybe, yeah, five. She's supposed to be standing in the doorway. That we can see the garage set somewhere her apartment is.
211, copy, thank you. 2823.
Five.
I'll be off at 2841. Uh, partner, let's not pull a complaint number yet, because we, or did you already, but did, uh, oh, okay. We're gonna use 8140, yeah, I gotta grab this, uh, your, your paper. Just pull it out?
Yeah. Is Lieutenant Davis still working?
Uh, Collins, Davis? Nope.
What happened to him?
He's at the train academy.
Maybe.
North, yeah, very nice guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it shows you I'm not drunk. I'm not, though, man, I'm not drunk at all, man, I'm dead honest with you, man, in a serious situation, whatever, I need to be in that, but, uh, somebody be in that, uh, they follow. How fortunate that I haven't drank, and showed that they follow me, man, I'm just on my breath, and I ain't drunk at all.
211, our caller states she's just before the long drift, near a alleyway.
211, copy.
147, radio check.
147, I'm good.
Copy, 1815, 711, stop.
Done, good. Desperate touches, desperate trouble, go, partner, see.
241, first status. 2827, 2812, unknown trouble, 2010, live court.
Okay.
2026, 2026, 10 live court, cause passed by, that she can hear, you know, screaming, yelling for help, and you're banging, like, the darkness, you can't see, I'm like...
Go. Hey, go.
211, copy.
What are we doing, 211?
Uh, 211.
Yeah, we're doing 211.
Yep.
And I'll be there for how long?
Uh, I'm not 100 sure on that one.
Do you understand, do you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
I do. I was lying.
Cars on Cobra Road, pass.
It's out of my control.
All right, we'll catch up there. All right, how we looking?
Good.
Good? You all right, partner?
Okay.
Well...
I couldn't control the heat drain, but, I mean...
Right. Listen, man, ain't nothing to be embarrassed about.
Ain't nothing to be embarrassed about.
Well...
I fight for this city, man.
It's, it's nothing that hasn't happened, uh, to people before, and, you know...
It happened to me.
Right.
And I fight for it, and everybody, and my friend knows that I'm a strong fighter.
But this doesn't change that.
Crooked, and this is crooked, and then, shoot.
This doesn't change that. This don't change that.
Man, it put me in the paper, and it's a bad...
Look, if you think that I'm about to go call a paper about your business, your business is your business.
But it meths my insurance.
It's a rental car, man, it's not even your car.
Yeah, but my truck is in the shop.
Oh, is it? Oh, what happened to your truck?
Somebody hit it at the tailgate, at the northern tailgate.
Oh, did it?
And I got the rental from the airport.
Gotcha.
But I wouldn't lie to you, man, I really wouldn't, man, they was really trying to do something, I don't know if they were trying to pick me up, or do whatever they were trying to do, I don't know.
Well, who are these people, though?
I don't know, I fight against...
How we looking on that?
I wasn't talking to it, had a, had a... Fight against paper administration.
Well, we keep, right, so, yeah, we're gonna fill it out by hand. Well, like I told you, I, I can't tell the media what they report, because that's not what I do, but I'm not gonna go run the telemedia, I don't do that. Your business is your business, okay?
The only one that fights, and the governor knows that they're crooked.
Do you run the place? Yep, okay, good.
And he knows, I can't...
Sir, did you have a rental agreement in that car, someplace?
I don't, no, it's in my truck.
Oh, okay.
And the rental agreement normally would be what, do you think?
It's a big piece of paper, usually perforated, is it enterprise realm, or is it, uh, enterprise?
No, no, it's, um, uh...
Hertz?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you know anything about the agreement?
Uh, I know what it looks like, have an idea.
Give me, give me, give me a sign.
I don't know what's in it, I know what it looks like, it's a big piece of perforated, or not perforated paper, a lot with a carbon charge. Oh, I don't know. I think your insurance, actually, your car insurance... They should pay for it, at the least they pay for it.
Yeah, but it's wrong.
I know insurance, man, there's always an insurance company that'll pay you money. Oh. Then why would they drop you?
I don't know, but the sad thing about it, don't rather, I would like...
You're thinking, you're, you're, you're looking worst-case scenario and everything, my friend.
I ain't just worst-case scenario, because I'm gonna tell you, I was on my way to pick my wife up from work, and I was gonna let her drive, because she work in the shop, and, 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 but I wouldn't lie to you, man, I'm fighting against the crooked administration.
I believe you.
It's off the record, man.
Right.
Off the record, man.
Well, you gotta understand to...
I don't know, and I don't know...
Well, you gotta understand to the obligations that we've got, you know what I mean? We oughta make sure everybody's safe out here.
I understand, but I don't understand, I do, I do understand.
And I get it, I understand what happened, and I don't want you to think that I'm completely ignoring what you're saying that happened earlier. I mean, I wanna know who did that, who do you think would be, uh...
If I really told you the true, true story, man, it wouldn't save me from going where I'm going.
No, but it would help save you from these people.
It would, it would.
How's that?
It would, it would, it would, and I'm being honest with you, man, and I know you a state police officer, my son's trying to work, work for the state police officer, and you probably gonna pass it, yeah.
Well, I would, I would want to help you, and I wanna find these people, but if you don't tell me who you think it is, and I...
I don't know who it was, but I do know that they're trying to block me.
Well, you gotta have some sort of idea, don't you?
I don't have an idea, you never know have an idea, when you fighting against the crooked administration.
Yes.
Someday you'll understand what I'm saying, man, not today, but someday you will, when they all come, and it will come out. But then I can't...
Mr. Davis, do you need anything out of that vehicle?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But I do wanna just go home, man. I guess I gotta go to jail.
Uh, from here, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go to the Michigan State Police Post in Clint.
This guard ran, I was thinking, I was like, man, I don't wanna go fifty-four tonight.
Oh, I know, he went for a ride at that guard, he's been on seventy-five years going so fast, um... Uh, he, uh, he should be in it, let me double check. Are they in there? Yes, sir. Shut up. You're an idiot, you're stupid. Why the god, why, this is, I don't even know why we're friends, I don't understand. Oh, they've never got jokes, dang it. Yeah, well, the... Oh, okay. Right, and you're, you can find... Hey, yes, I do recall, I tell that story often, I will actually make sure that, uh, you're on page three of my report. Uh, no, I'm just... Uh... Nope. Nope. Oh, my gosh, somebody one of the ten numbers just showed up here. I tell them the family number just showed up here, let me go talk to her. All right, bye. Yes, ma'am? Is what for one, 12th Davis? Oh, I, I'm not sure, I can't tell that to you, ma'am. Okay.
Yeah, my bag is in the back seat.
Okay.
I can't get it in there.
Uh-oh, so what do you got, keys?
Keys.
Like a door key?
Yeah.
Where is your door key at?
In, in the back seat of the bag.
Okay, why don't you hang out right there real quick? You said you guys are married?
Yeah.
Do you have an ID on you?
Nope, you were taking the bag.
All right, watch forward, or does that, did that have your name on it?
Yeah, it don't have my Mary's name on it, but it's...
All right, come up here for a second. Uh... Hey, partner, is this your wife? Can I give her the keys? Can I give her the keys to the house that are in the bag?
Yeah.
Your keys are? All right. And your keys are right here.
Okay, but what about my bag, though?
Uh, oops.
I don't have...
Are these the keys?
Yeah, those are the keys.
Okay, the bag is gonna be at Louis' toy, okay, so go up there tomorrow, I'm not, we're not gonna release a bunch of paper, a bunch of stuff to you out of the car, okay? You got keys, worry about getting that thing out with Louis tomorrow, okay?
Got my money in it, I can't...
What, well, is there anything with your name in the bag?
Yes.
What is it?
Mine.
Like your ID?
My ID is in here.
All right, hold on, let me check. Montez, can we, can we give her bag to her up in the trunk? All right. All right, let's grab the bag out of her, he said that's okay. You got the keys to this thing still? Uh, just got a bag out of here right quick.
So it's in the back seat.
Oh, jeez, low key. There it is.
Yeah, great thing.
It is Hertz? Hertz sound right?
Yes.
Okay.
My license?
There you go. He said you could have it, he saw you, so I'm confident that he'll care to have it.
He answered all that? Yeah.
Believe me, because I've fallen on my butt going through the force, so...
So where are they taking them?
He's gonna be over at the, uh, Michigan State Police Post in Clint, uh, and then from there, more than likely, he's gonna end up at the city of Flintdale.
I mean, is he gonna stay in here?
He's gonna stay in there until he's sobered up. That's usually how that works, okay? He's okay, I mean, he's fine, he didn't get hurt, that's for sure, you know, his crash, he definitely could've been hurt, but he's fine, okay? Here, how about I walk with you down here, I want you foot in fall.
Okay.
That can be kinda slippery. Who came and got you?
My friend, he was late.
Oh, well, thanks, everybody. Yeah, we're good, thanks, man.
See ya.
Oh, you're welcome, this hill is steep. This is Miller Road. Well, he came from sixty-nine, two Miller, he done the rant.
And the brother is on out of town.
All right, you guys okay? Yep, you're welcome. Yep, you're welcome.
Would you mind?
Putting down a floor?
No, wait, I can, I can put it down. Well, I mean...
I wouldn't say there's a way for it.
I'm the only one that really fight for the city. And I think that's all I took this to the train.
What do you mean, you don't think we fight for the city?
I know you do, but up top I have to select you.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate you being, uh,
I live everything.
Being honest, and... Well, that's all you can do, if you want, man, that's the best thing you can do, really. There you go. Thirty-five, seventy-five. So that's taking one of the posts. So your wife has your, uh, her house keys and the bag out of the back there, and I helped her back down the hill, back to her coworker who gave her a ride, so... Uh, no, because I don't know what time that'll be. I don't wanna tell her something wrong. You did? For what? If you don't mind me asking?
I murdered a man for raping my mother.
Oh, that's no good.
Yeah, we been raped, raped my mother, and I'm ready to walk, and I got elected governor. I just thought that maybe you guys could understand, and say, we don't want this man to fall, and to make the city of Flint look bad, because the government wants you guys to take over our city.
Montez, did I, did, did I ever tell you that I thought you were a bad person?
No, but you picked it out, man.
Right, for the mistakes that happened, and if that just hap, it's a mistake.
There was no mistake, people had guns on me, man, I'm telling you that you...
Right, well, the mistake I'm making down to the post for isn't for someone having a gun on ya, for drunk driving, for drunk driving. That's all. Hello? Well, you know, that wouldn't be safe.
You taking me home, I'm not going home, you taking me home.
Right.
I didn't hurt nobody.
That wouldn't be safe for us to...
But I didn't hurt nobody.
Let you go home.
I didn't hurt nobody, somebody tried to hurt me.
Right, and you were also drunk while you're driving. That's the issue I had, and I gotta say...
I was too drunk.
Well, that's, that's debatable, and depending on how big the, you never know, I might have counted it as three or four drinks, I don't know. But what I do know...
I can be honest, though, I be honest with the police.
That you didn't pass your field sobriety test, you didn't do so hot on them.
It's only X to B, B all the way to one G, lanes?
Do you hear what I'm saying? Forty-four, five, that's understood, right. Well, we're good. I can guarantee you one thing, you are like in the safest place you can be right now, no one's gonna pull a gun down here.
That's a fact.
Oh, that's fact.
And I'll be alright. I'll be alright.
Thirty-five, seventy-five, out post. Alright, go ahead and stand and face the car here for me, there you go.
Please, over to you, ma'am. Conch, decision, fourth of May, crook, up.
Alright, sir, we're gonna walk up here towards the, uh, glass door. And then we're gonna walk straight ahead to that, uh, big wood door. And, uh, just face the door right here for me real quick, we're gonna get these handcuffs off you, okay? Just keep both these hands behind you until I get both of these handcuffs off, okay? Alright, sir, could you go ahead and peel your belt off for me? Thank you, sir. Alright, just gotta check your pockets one more time, make sure we don't have anything else on them.
I ain't got no gun, I'm gonna let you to fish, I'm a...
I'm not saying you got a gun, I didn't say that. I'm just checking to make sure that you got, uh, papers, anything, anything down. Because my boss is here, and he's gotta make sure that there's nothing in your pockets, and if he checks, I don't wanna yell at you.
Did you get my wallet?
Yes, I do.
Got your wallet, you got my money in my wallet?
All that stuff's in there, yep. I swear to leave it up there. Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, go ahead and have a seat in that chair and take those shoes off for me. Yeah, can I do that? And, uh, you can turn that camera off as well. And there was light. Alright, partner, go ahead and sit up, have a seat on that bench here for me. Sir, just, uh, scooch your feet over here a little bit more, I gotta get again my first law.
I can do it, I can do it. I can do it again.
Alright, well, that, thank you, you're good. Thirty-five, seventy-five. From the post inquiry.
Three forty-one.
Three forty-one.
We work this weekend on two-two?
Um, we are gonna be off tomorrow, we're gonna be off Sunday.
You have the weekend off?
Yeah.
And I'll explain to you why. All the way.
Yeah. You hear that?
The traffic report.
Uh, traffic report, I'm, I'm, I figured, do you too? I would agree. Yeah, after a while, it's gonna... I gotta time you out. So where's your wife work, uh, Mr. Davis?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Which one does she work at? Oh, okay, never heard of that one. What does she do there? Okay. Well, she was concerned about ya, she seems like a very nice lady.
She is.
Yeah. So she got, well, I'm only saying you were. So she got her bag out of the car, she's, she actually had a coworker, I guess, give her a ride.
That was her friend, her partner.
Okay, yeah, she said it was a coworker hurting or something.
Pretty car, it's based in hang up, it's made a lot of...
Man or woman?
Uh, it was a woman.
Miss car is there, very playful.
She said they were out looking for ya, and they passed us a couple times, I guess. She found us.
So where we headed?
Uh, we're heading to McLaren Hospital.
Where?
Uh, to get your blood drawn.
I won't do it.
Okay, well, just so you know, it was, uh, there's a search warrant that was signed by Judge LaShana.
I don't care.
Okay, well, the judge ordered that your blood be drawn, so...
I'm not going to do that, I don't have a right to do that, I have a, I should, I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you that it's, it's not gonna be good if you don't.
But what's the consequence behind not doing it?
Well, you will, we'll, we'll hold you down and do it.
Oh, you'll hold me down and give it to me?
Yeah.
Set me up for failure, I don't care about that, it ain't gonna, I ain't gonna fail. I'm gonna still continue to be elected official, it don't matter.
Well, we're, we're gonna get your blood, though, first, before that. Mr. Davis, you keep going back to this elected official stuff, okay?
I am, I am elected official.
And that has not one single thing to do with what happened to me.
But you never acknowledged the fact that somebody put a gun on me, you never mentioned that, not somebody.
You don't think so?
And that's your mind, brother.
So what about when I called my partners and told them about the car and had them go look for it?
It don't matter, but you...
That doesn't matter?
Me, because you...
Well, of course it does.
You didn't mention the fact that I got caught drinking, and I hit a sign, or hit a pole, but you never mentioned at all...
Where did you hit a pole?
Whatever you, I hit, whatever I hit, or a sign, a pole, or, or, or something that can prevent you from hitting, I don't know what they call it, but the whole point of the matter is...
Do you know what you ran to?
Yeah, what was it? I don't know what it was, but I know for a fact that it was something that prevents you from going over the cliff.
Hmm.
So whatever they call it, but you never mentioned any concern about me, to say, well, who could it been that they put the gun on you, you never mentioned that.
I ask you that at minimum of five times, at least, five times.
I don't think it was five times, I think it was more than you being adamant about getting my blood.
I think it was more than five times.
I think you were more adamant about getting my blood, but it doesn't matter, you can get the blood, I don't care about that, because I'm still gonna be elected official, and I'm still gonna always be a minister to the state of New York.
Well, I thought you were our friends a minute ago.
I know, I'm not your friend, I'm not your friend, I'm just thinking, I'm not your friend.
Okay.
And it's not being...
Sorry to hear that.
It's not being disrespectful, I'm not your friend. Can't be my friend if you take me through this.
Well, there's nothing I'm doing, this is stuff that you kinda brought on yourself.
No, it's something that somebody put a gun on me, but I drunk, but I admit that.
Thirty-five, seventy-five, we'll be out at, uh...
You were him, drunk.